Are we ready?
We're ready.
Ursula.
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 Ursula. Do we make a motion to go back to closed session?
Do we make a motion to both?
In open session.
Is that what you mean? Can I have a motion to go back to open session?
I make a motion to return.
May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Doyle, here. Mr. Gatewood.
Present.
Mrs. Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Moreno. Mrs. Simmleton.
Present.
Mrs. Swanson.
Present.
Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to appoint Dominic Saron as our interim Board of Education member?
I make a motion to appoint Dominic Saron as our interim Board of Education member.
Mrs. Simmleton.
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood.
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Can you hear me now?
Just be gladly into the microphone, please.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dominic Saron, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the Oswego Community Unit School District Number 308 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. So you repeat it.
I, Dominic Saron, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the Oswego Community Unit School District Number 308 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a school board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at the school board meeting.
I shall recognize that a school board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a school board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the school board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the school board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality of education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality of education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Oswego Community Unit School District 308.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Oswego Community Unit School District 308.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools or schools to advance the vision for Oswego Community Unit School District 308.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community school or schools to advance the vision for Oswego Community Unit School District 308.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Thank you very much and congratulations and welcome to the board. Dr. Sparland will now make a comment.
Good evening to everyone in attendance, whether physically or remotely. In March of 2020, all of our lives drastically changed. The past 23 months have been difficult and complex for everyone, especially our students. Many of you have lost loved ones to COVID, and to anyone grieving, I am sorry for your loss. There is no one that hasn't been somehow changed by this pandemic. At all of our board meetings, we have set time set aside for the public to share its thoughts and opinions on different matters with the board. During public comment, opposing views and issues are often expressed on a variety of topics. We don't all have to agree on the opinion shared, but what is important is that we are all respectful of everyone sharing their views. I respectfully ask that we remember this as people are speaking and that we refrain from making comments or interrupting others. Tonight, the Board of Education wants to hear from you, and we also have other school business that needs to be done. We have people to hire, bills to pay, and construction projects that need approved. We also have two informational presentations that will be of interest to the community. All of these things are important for our district to operate. In August of this year, the Board of Education approved Policy 7:165 regarding student use of face masks during a pandemic. On that same date, the Board approved our district safety plan, which outlined the layered mitigation strategies we were going to follow to help ensure we would be able to have full-time in-person learning for the 2122 school year. The face mask policy is one layer of our plan that was put into place to help ensure we were able to get through this year with full-time in-person learning, which we've been able to do. The safety plan is a 21-page document that outlines cleaning and sanitization, hand washing, ventilation, classroom layout, social distancing, visitors to school, personal protective equipment, and face coverings in our buildings and on our buses. Throughout this pandemic, we've had to change or modify our protocols in response to the ever-changing conditions and guidance we have been given. I know many of you are here to share your opinion on changing our requirements regarding masking in our schools. The Board and I appreciate all the information that has been sent to us this past week. In July, when the positivity rates and the number of cases in our area were very low, I recommended to the Board, and they accepted that recommendation, that masking would be optional. Then, as happened many times in this pandemic, the metrics changed and the Board also had to make changes as they adopted a safety plan that were based on local metrics. As you are all aware, over the past six months, Illinois schools have operated under the governor's executive order in regards to masking. As many of you know, our school district is a defendant in the downstate lawsuits challenging Governor Pritzker's executive orders regarding certain COVID mitigation measures, including the wearing of masks in school buildings. We are complying with the TRO, which prevents the school district from relying on the governor's Pritzker's executive orders regarding masks. However, the judge who issued the TRO did not prevent our school district from generally following our own policies and safety plans. At this time, Policy 7:165 and the safety plan require that masks be worn inside all school buildings based on local metrics. However, we want to acknowledge that the landscape of COVID-19 has changed as compared to last fall. As the community responds to COVID-19 changes and metrics continue to show decrease in cases, we understand the importance of having a plan in place that allows for layers of mitigation to be peeled away in response. The Board has asked the administration to present an updated safety plan during the February 28th board meeting, recognizing current metrics and the fact that our youngest learners have now had the opportunity to be vaccinated if they so choose. The Board and I look forward to hearing your thoughts and opinions on this subject this evening. As you can see from our agenda, we will not be making any decisions on our safety plan tonight. With that said, this doesn't mean that changes will not be made in the near future. The Board and administration will remain in open communication as we work together with the same goal of keeping our schools the safest environment possible while making decisions that fairly represent the communities that we serve. I thank you for listening to me for everything that I had to say, and as I mentioned a few minutes ago, as our community members are provided with their time for public comment, I ask that we all show each other respect that we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sparland. Now, I would like to make a comment. One of our goals as a board is to maintain a healthy, in-person learning environment for students and staff. We truly believe that everyone in this space wants that as well. We may not always agree on how or when we get there, and that's okay. Listening to different perspectives and putting ourselves in the place of others helps us to grow as individuals and hopefully lessen the distance between our positions. It is our desire that we extend grace toward one another as we navigate these challenging times together. Your voice matters and we hear you. Thank you. Now, it's an opportunity for public comment. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary of, to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Tonight, we will extend the 30-minute maximum timeframe for public comments to 60 minutes so that the Board has the opportunity to hear from more residents. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. To honor the Board's student voice priority, our student ambassadors will be reading student email comments for a time period of 15 minutes. Please note, the public comments that we've shared by email will be recorded in the minutes and shared with all board members. No discussion of personnel matters or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. If your questions or concerns require follow-up, a member of the administration will reach out through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Apologies in advance if any of the names are read incorrectly. Jonah Travis Dutton. Hi, my name is Jonah Travis Dutton. I'm a fourth grade student in Old Post Elementary. I want to tell you I absolutely hate masks. It restricts seeing most friends' faces, plus it is hard to hear when talking. I also hate masks because they remove our rights and we need to fight for them. Another reason I hate masks is because it can be hard to breathe. Please make masks optional. We are one of the only states that have such a strict mandate. Most other states have gotten rid of the mandate and they're doing fine. Just give us a chance. Thank you, Jonah.
Christopher Dutton. Dear Board, my name is Chris and I'm a sixth grader at Thompson. I want to tell you my feelings about masks. I hate them. I can't breathe, especially in gym. They are uncomfortable. I can't see anyone's faces and it's hard to breathe. Please give us a choice. Everyone is sad and it just isn't fair. I have weaker lungs and I think it is time for a change. It is hard to hear classmates and teachers, and if we don't wear it, we are denied learning, which isn't fair. During summer band, we weren't forced to wear masks and everyone had so much fun and no one got sick. The last week of band, we were forced again and it was awful. Thank you, Chris.
I am a student at Murphy Junior High. I do not want to wear a mask anymore. I saw that the judge said that we shouldn't have to wear a mask. My mom works in Plainfield and they don't have to wear masks. My mom is willing to homeschool me or let me switch districts if Oswego's rules don't change.
Rebecca Dutton. Dear Board of Education, I am an eighth grader at Thompson Junior High School. I would like to tell you my opinions and feelings about masks. Masks absolutely suck. It makes it harder to breathe. Gym class is horrible. You can't see your friends' faces. They are uncomfortable and it makes it harder to understand others. I wanted to go to school without a mask and stand up for my rights, but the way students who have gone without a mask have been treated is absolutely ridiculous. Students are getting pulled out of school and even suspended, denying their ability to learn simply because they do not have a piece of cloth covering their faces. During the first couple of weeks of summer band, masks were not mandated. Everyone was happy and those who wanted to wear a mask could. No one got sick. However, when masks were mandated again around the last week of summer band, the mood completely changed. Everyone hated it. Nobody wears their mask properly anyways and not much is done about it. How would it be different if masks were removed completely? I'm in a musical. It's horrible to practice, sing, and perform when there is a mask getting in the way. Choir is the same way. Singing with a mask on is absolutely terrible. After-school sports are the same way. Playing sports in a mask, sweating in a mask is just horrible. If we are healthy and have no reason to wear a mask, then why should we? Sincerely, Rebecca Dutton.
Yvonne Gomez. By far, Oswego High School has had many incidents that have not been handled the efficient way or at all. From staff disrespecting students to sexual assault, to staff putting hands on students, to staff failing to support and listen to students. The level of disrespect and discouragement from Oswego High School staff has been unacceptable. To allow this behavior to continue is an unsafe and dangerous mentally and physically for a learning environment. This school talks a lot about respect from students to staff and doing good and being to class on time, et cetera, but where is the student's respect from the staff? In my personal opinion, if the staff respected students more, they would care more about the rules. I've talked to many students about the way I feel and I would say at least 50 or more kids agree with me, I will continue to fight for a better environment. Oswego High School staff should get training to deal with mental health and how to approach escalated situations and understand the way of students thinking.
Ashton Pope. Hi, Ms. Duder. I was told to contact this email if I was wanting to say something about the mask situation. Okay, so one, Oswego, Naperville, and Aurora are the only cities that wear masks in school and not even in schools like all over the country. No one wears masks, so why are we the ones who need to wear masks? In 2020, when I was going into sixth grade, the Board had said that if you are vaccinated, you are allowed to not have a mask on. Then, we had e-learning all of the first semester last year, even when other schools were, well, not just in the district, but other districts still went to school. When schools were back in person, they didn't have to wear a mask.
Raquel Soraco. I'm a big believer in free will and people's choice. I find it unsettling that our school, Oswego High School, is the only school that is continuing to mandate masks. Every other school is allowing their students to feel comfortable with whatever choice they decide, and when my school is not doing the same, it makes me feel as if they don't value our freedoms. I understand some people are still afraid of the virus or have loved ones that have health conditions and are afraid of spreading it to them. But those people can wear masks and get the vaccines they want. People don't even wear their masks correctly, therefore it is useless on a day-to-day basis anyways. You should never force anyone to do anything they don't want to do. This pandemic has been going on a little over two years and we need to stop being so afraid. Coronavirus is clearly not going anywhere and will always be a thing, just like the flu or any common sickness. I hope Oswego High School does better and listens to the judge. Thank you.
Caleb Fortson. Einstein stated that doing the same thing over and over and expecting different outcomes is the very definition of insanity. For two years, we have socially distanced and worn masks and still COVID numbers escalate. For two years, obsession of preventing COVID has been a priority and not discovering ways to treat COVID. Due process and the right to be are the very things that set us apart from all other countries. Masks should be an individual choice. Some people say, well, why isn't wearing a seatbelt a choice? Well, studies prove seatbelts do more harm, do more good than harm, and then through due process laws were enacted for courts to follow disciplinary circumstances for offenses of not wearing a seatbelt. We have worn masks and socially distanced, along with excluding fellow students, myself included, from a learning environment without a positive COVID test, all because there is a chance of us having COVID. Despite our efforts to socially distance and wear masks, COVID still spreads, so why are we still wearing masks? Why are we putting unfounded stress on children if the preventative measures are not working? Vaccines, boosters, masks, socially distancing have happened for long enough. If it worked, numbers would not rise. The Omicron variant is much milder, we are told by our federal government, but could it mean herd immunity is working? And as people are put into an environment with COVID, our bodies have adapted causing a less serious virus. The theory of evolution was taught to me. The fundamental idea of evolution is adaption. We have been muzzled long enough, it should be an individual's right to wear a mask, not a school board or administrators, without a medical degree, making personal choices about our right to be. Thank you for listening, Caleb Fortson.
Brandon Lane. Hello, I'm a student who is currently attending Oswego East High School. I'm emailing you regarding the mask mandate at schools in our district. This Monday, some students protested the district's mask mandate. I was compelled to contemplate doing the same, however, I did not a decision in which I now regret. I witnessed other students harassing these brave, maskless students with profanity and putting up signs throughout the school. Our school contributed to the harassment by segregating all of the maskless students and keeping them all in one room. As you know, I and many other students and parents are upset with the current mask situation. We believe it should be up to the person to be able to decide whether they wear a mask or not. I hope this contributes to the overruling of the mask mandate in our district. Thank you for your time and consideration.
AJ Weber. Hi, my name is AJ Weber and I'm a sophomore here at Oswego East High School. I'm writing to you today to give my opinions on the mask topic for the District 308 School Board Meeting. To start, I believe the district policy on when to require a mask is outdated and unintelligent. This policy needs to change due to the fact that this virus has changed so much since the month of August. We are never going to get down to the level of transmission in the area that the district wants to see. There is always going to be a student out sick and we cannot keep on waiting for this virus to go away, which is never going to happen. Students know more than anyone how infuriating it is to wear a mask eight hours a day, five days a week, from month on end. It is uncomfortable, it is frustrating, and it irritates my skin. You may have noticed half the students in the school have either kept it below their noses or below their mouth because of how uncomfortable it is to wear all day long. So ask yourself this question. What would change not requiring masks? The only thing that would change is the happiness and well-being of most students. We would all have the freedom of choice. Thus, this leads us into the topic of the temporary restraining order. I believe, at least until we see what happens with the appeal, masks should be optional for all students and staff. Other surrounding districts have gotten their freedom back and I believe we need to do the same. I am sure we all have heard by now the Illinois mask mandate is expected to end on February 28th. However, the governor is keeping the mandate in place for all schools throughout the state. I believe that this was a very selfish decision by the governor of Illinois. He is clearly trying to win in his legal battle and does not care about the comfort and well-being of students and staff. Though the governor wants to lift the school mask mandate in the coming weeks, I believe we should follow other districts and do it sooner. Technically, as of this moment, the governor has no authority to mandate masks for schools because of a downstate judge declaring it illegal. After all, why keep us in a mask when we were the lowest-risk age group while it is being lifted for everyone else? In conclusion, we have all gone through so much these past two years and I believe District 308 should follow other districts and make masks optional for all students and staff because it's time to move on. Sincerely, AJ Weber.
Good evening, my name is Eric Icon. I'm a sophomore at Oswego East High School. I'm sending this email in regards to the mask mandates that are being enforced in the district. I would like to start by addressing that I understand other people's views and opinions on the mandates and I fully respect their decision to wear a mask. However, I would like to share my views. We have been living with coronavirus for over two years now and we have been living with the flu for many more years. Not once were we ever told to put on a mask by the district when flu cases were in full swing. The masks were originally put into place to limit the spread of the coronavirus. And while the numbers have gotten under control since the beginning of the pandemic, there's only so much we can do to keep COVID from spreading around. The required case transmission level to lift the mask mandate in the district is 10 to 49.99% according to the district email. And while we are currently far above this level, what is going to bring us to the required level? We've been wearing a mask this whole school year and not once have we seen a significant decrease in cases in our district. So why the mandate? It's clearly not proving effective now, so what is going to make it effective in the future? We need to learn to live with this virus. We've been living with the flu for decades and while the flu was a very dangerous virus in the beginning, we have adapted, researched, and become immune to the flu. It does not seem to be fair that students who are still young and healthy, for the most part, are being forced to wear a mask when the rest of the state is starting to ease the restrictions. According to ABC News, the mortality rate for students under the age of 25 is 1%. The 1% mortality rate was students with existing health issues such as asthma or heart problems. And masks can be helpful to the group of people who are at higher risk. But the general population does not need to be forced to change their life for the smaller population. To conclude, I just wanted to share my opinion. I was taught at an early age to speak up if I believe if something is inaccurate or unlawful. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Weiner. Hi, my name is Sarah Weiner and I go to Lakewood Creek Elementary School. I am a third grader. I do not like wearing masks at school. It makes me feel uncomfortable because I can't breathe. I get upset because I can't see my friends' faces or my teachers. When my daddy told me that the school wouldn't let us take off our masks, I cried and now I don't want to go to school. I love school. PE is hard when we have to wear our masks. We get sweaty and I feel like I can't breathe in it. I have been getting dots all on my face because of wearing it for so long. I miss playing with friends without wearing masks. I miss seeing smiling faces around me. Thank you, Sarah Weiner.
Natalie Arias. Board of Members and District Administration, my name is Natalie Arias and I am a sophomore at OEHS. I have a sister in eighth grade, a brother in fourth grade, and my mom is an elementary special education teacher assistant. I've been concerned this entire school year about COVID and the safety of our schools. My entire family is in three different schools every day. First, I want to say thank you to each of you for working so hard to do what is in the best interest of the entire school community and not making decisions to please one group or another. There most likely isn't a way for you to do that anyway. Second, I was happy to hear that it was advised that it was okay to continue with the district's safety plan regarding masks. I know that there are decisions working their way through the courts, but I would not feel safe attending school in a building with around 2,000 students without masks being worn by everyone, especially as there is no other option for me but to go to school in person. Finally, I want to make sure that you know that there are students and families who want to follow the guidelines from medical want to follow the guidelines from medical experts. Their guidance has not changed. Masks should be worn universally in schools. Please continue to make any decisions regarding mask policies with the recommendations in mind. Our entire country is still in a high rate of transmission for COVID-19. Please continue to do what is best to keep my family and all of District 308 families safe. Thank you for your time.
Vincent Drain. To the Board of Education Secretary, I am a sixth-grade student at Binnarsick Junior High School. I am writing to express my stance on the current in-school mask mandate. We, the students, are frustrated over being masked for the last two years. We understand the intent was to keep us safe initially, but just as the virus has evolved, so has the understanding of mask effectiveness, and unfortunately has become a political means to control our civil rights and ability to choose what is best for ourselves. We have been told to stand up for what we believe in, and this is our opportunity to do just that. Now is also the time for the school district and our teachers to stand up for us. I suffer from anxiety, and the masks make it a lot worse. Please help the kids' mental health. We have been through enough. I am tired of constantly being asked and reminded to put on or pull up my mask. It has caused me many days to not want to come to school and created a divide between me and my teachers. I want things to be normal again. As well as I am a hockey player at a club with 500-plus players, we have been playing and traveling together maskless. We have been the perfect scientific test case that we can remove the mask and be safe. Does the school board also not see that all of us kids have been playing together maskless outside of school? And it makes no sense that when Monday comes around, a mask is miraculously going to keep us safe. This is America, the country of freedom. Help us uphold our constitutional rights. Thank you very much. Vinnie Drain.
Ava Murray.
Yes, I would, I would love to hear the rest of those.
Ava Murray. Hello, this is my third year going through COVID-19. As a student and as one of, as the one going through the constant mask-wearing, I thought I should have my say. I did, I do not love masks, but they protect us as a whole, and I enjoy knowing that I am at a lessened risk of getting COVID-19. If we did not wear masks, imagine how many more COVID-19 cases there would be. Currently, in the Springfield area, we are at 2,889, according to the CDC. If we didn't wear masks, imagine how many more cases there would be instead. Close to the 5,000s? I'm not sure, but I do know this. Even though wearing a mask may bring a bit of discomfort, it protects you and the people around you. If you don't care about your health and safety, think of your kids and friends. And wearing a mask protects them as well. Just think about that before you go around shouting your beliefs at the world. Thank you, have a great day.
Hello, I want to thank the parents that are being civilized about this whole matter. To the parents who are yelling and being immature about the matter, I would like you to know that you are setting a bad example for your children. Do you want to raise children that are unruly in public? Do you really think that yelling and threatening people is going to help you get what you want? I'd hope not, because if that is the case, I don't want to see how the next generation turns out. I think that the phrase "kill them with kindness" applies in this situation. Do you remember when COVID-19 first started and people were going on walks together and being good people in general? I do understand that everyone is sick and tired of COVID-19, but you can't end it with sharp words and rude actions. But we can help each other through this, so please be kind and stay strong. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Emily Corvatt. Greetings, I'm an eighth-grade student at Trower who supports the idea of masks being optional at school. First of all, masks are uncomfortable when they pull on my ears all day and are uncomfortable around my face, and I'm distracted by how the mask may be sucking into my face when breathing. I generally find it harder to concentrate while wearing it. Secondly, it is harder to understand what people are saying when wearing masks. Most of the time, we end up having to get closer to people when talking to understand what we're saying, which defeats the purpose of social distancing. There are also many problems with miscommunication, such as students not quite picking up on teacher instructions, as well as teachers not quite catching on to what students may be asking or answering. Additionally, masks make it very difficult to socialize. Since most of a person's face is covered by the mask, it is hard to see how they are reacting to what I'm saying, and with all of these difficulties, I feel like I've become less social and extroverted than I used to be because of a lot of the times, I just give up on the idea of talking to people. Finally, nobody seems to wear masks correctly at school anyway, and most importantly, the people have immunity to the virus by being vaccinated and/or naturally infected. Overall, having us wear masks all day probably doesn't make us all healthier, but it does make it more difficult to learn and act normal. Sincerely, Emily Corvatt.
Yes. I will give the names of two people, so two people can move up closer to the front. The first one is Brian Pope. The second one is Leila Yahhi. Hope I said that right.
Bring the microphone closer.
Brian Pope and Leila Yahhi.
Can I go first? Does it matter? Okay. My name is Leila Yahhi. I wanted to talk today to express my disgust with this state, and specifically this board. I'm a mother of three in this district. My daughter, my oldest, is seven and has never had one normal day in her life. I want everyone here to absorb that she has never had one normal day of school in her entire life. She completely missed kindergarten, and that's okay, because we didn't know, but now we do. She missed memories I didn't realize were so important until they were never made. Now she's experiencing first grade and making best friends, having never seen their faces except for 10 to 15 minutes during her snack. I would like this board to present the evidence that these masks are protecting our children. One shred of data anywhere in the world that this proves, that proves this and defends your lack of reason. All I see is hypocrites. I guarantee everyone here is resume their normal life, is going to parties, vacations, whatever they want to do, and then we all walk into school on Monday and act like these kids are riddled with disease and they're just spreading it unless they have some mask muzzling them. Again, according to the real data, children with no comorbidities have the lowest hospitalization rates and death rates, and we've known this since 2020. I'm appalled at the notion that I'll have to explain to my kids why I allowed them to be abused for political purposes. It's obvious that this district has other motivations in mind, and our, their education is just simply not, obviously not priority number one. The pandemic is over, this virus is now endemic, and we need to live with it. If masks do not become optional soon, my family is moving. There are 40 other states in this union my kids can live a normal life, and Oswego, Illinois is not worth it.
State Representative Batnick is next. State Representative Batnick, if you'd like to come up.
Members of board, in regards to the district's policy 7165 regarding student masking and the district's safety plan, I question the district's legal opinion as the temporary restraining order deemed null and void many more rules and emergency changes beyond the governor's executive orders. District emails from July through August specify the district accounting for updated ISB and IDPH guidance, and per the TRO on page 11, quote, "IDPH did not mandate the COVID-19 vaccine, nor did it issue emergency rules pertaining to vaccines or masks. The governor did, and then ISB promulgated its emergency rules to carry out the governor's orders," end quote. Thus, the ISB/IDPH guidance was created based on and to support the executive orders, which are now null and void. As a result of, as a result of Judge Grishaw voiding the updated definitions, policy 7165 and many parts of the district's safety plan are in violation of the IDPH Act and our due process rights. In the event my legal understanding is incorrect, I still question the wisdom of the board reverting to a safety plan that does not account for updates in the COVID-19 pandemic specific to masks. I know you mentioned earlier that that's to be done shortly. However, medical experts finally began stating in December what many of us have known long ago, is that cloth masks are little more than facial decorations, and began recommending higher-quality masks like N95s, the kind the Biden administration is now distributing. But the problem with those masks is the CDC also states on their website, "N95 masks are not designed, fitted, nor recommended for children, and have ever been broadly tested on children to determine efficacy." Therefore, there is nothing children are approved to wear on their faces to statistically significantly lower the chances of infection from COVID-19 or any other airborne virus. If you'd like to see any additional studies, I emailed the board on Saturday with a link to the Brownstone Institute, listing about 150 comparative studies and articles on ineffectiveness and harms of masking. But finally, I am appalled at the district utilizing an inequitable exclusionary and divisive policy for those not named on the temporary restraining order. You created, voted on, and deployed an inequitable opportunity and outcome for students without the choice to wear a mask versus those on the TRO. You are excluding students from class and from learning for close-contact tracing, yet those on the TRO suffer no such fate. The TRO didn't create this situation, you did, by reverting to and implementing the safety plan. Fortunately, you also have the choice and the power to reverse this harmful choice even before February 28th, and I pray that you do so with utmost haste. I'm happy to discuss anything further with you at your convenience, and thank you for your time.
David Piazza will be next. David Piazza.
Thanks for letting me speak. As the board had said, I'm State Representative Mark Batnick. This is a wonderful board meeting for me to, to come to. The, I'm sorry, the woman who spoke first, what was your name? Yes. Leila. Leila. You directed something about, towards the state, and that's why I'm here. I'm kind of here to, I think, a lot of what I've said, and I hate the mask thing too, to talk, but a lot of the anger that's directed towards the school board, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the anger that's been directed towards the school boards really should be directed towards the state, and that's why I'm here. So, wait. Ladies and gentlemen.
Please let him speak.
Look, you want to talk about your frustration? My wife is a, is a special ed teacher. I have five kids, I have two in school. My oldest daughter is a speech pathologist. You want to know what it's like being an elected state official, representing 109,000 people, and not having one hearing for two years about the upsides, the downsides, any of the mitigations? When you're going to do significant mitigations to the state, an equal amount of heavy transparency is required, and we haven't had that. And we're asking the board to do things, it's not just the epidemiology of it. There's issues with mental health that we've talked about. There's issues with ESL learning, there's special ed issues, there's all kinds of issues. They don't have the ability as a board, every school district in the state does not have the ability of a board to call in all those people. But for two years, I have not had the ability to do that at the state level. I have not had the ability, as a state rep, to, to hash this out and to come up with a plan. So in, in August, completely agree. You know, they were put into a situation, because we didn't codify any of this under the law, this went to the courts. So now we're dealing with this because of what happened, what happened with the courts, right? They're, they're being put in a position to make a decision on something that I feel that we should have had to put a vote on. I'm telling you that I would have had the ability, I would have had the desire to put an ability on, to, to put a vote on any of the mitigations. I want that, because the state has the ability to call in enough of the experts, to call in everybody, not just the epidemiologists, but to call in everybody, upside, downside of everything. I want to do that. That said, we're in the situation that we are in now, and I'm pleased to hear that the board is going to review their plan. They were forced to put a plan in on their own that should have been done at the state level. I'm glad they're putting in a plan. This is different, as you mentioned, this is different than it was at the beginning when you, when you, when you put the plan in place in August. There's vaccines. We, we know more about N95's ability even, even to get those sorts of things. There, the Omicron hasn't been as dangerous as some, as some of the other variants have been. That said, I would hope that we do an expedited review of your current plan. I applaud the board for having a plan. I think one of the, I think one of the hardest jobs in politics.
Thank you, sir.
Representative Batnick, we appreciate you being here today. We are sticking to the three-minute. You got it. I'll stay around for a while for anybody who wants to talk to me.
Joanne Johnson is next. Joanne Johnson.
Joanne Johnson, 19 years in this school district, five children, first graduating class of OE, second graduating class of OE, I got one more to go. Please listen to this carefully, everybody. Isaiah, chapter 49, verse 25. "But thus saith the Lord, 'Even the captives of the mighty shall be taken away, and the prey of the terrible shall be delivered; for I will contend with them, the contended with thee, and I will save thy children.'" God gave us our freedom. It was reaffirmed by our founding fathers and the Constitution of the United States. It was not given to Governor J.B. Prisket, Anthony Fauci, ISB, any teachers' union, any school board, nor the school administration. We will all have our judgment day that we cannot get away from. I believe 100% you are making a horrible mistake, and the fact that you said right off the bat without hearing anybody's words, not our children, who absolutely said it best, I'm going to cut my speech in half, because they already covered it. For you to say that you're not going to vote tonight completely tells us what we mean. This is all political. I did not sign my rights over to anybody to determine my child's medical treatments. A PCR test is a medical procedure. A, a mask is a medical device. N95 masks, just read the back of it, it'll tell you how effective it is with coronavirus. It is not effective at all. Mrs. Simleton, I just want to get it on the record, just in case nobody heard it, she said that we cannot serve anybody up there, because she said so, and it is going to happen during the week when the board members do not have an office at the district. So I will be standing at the front there, and I will lay down each person's letter of intent from me to file a claim against your surety bonds for breaking your oath. You swore an oath to uphold the Constitution, the Constitution of Illinois, as well as to serve these children. It has been proven that you're hurting our children.
David Piazza will speak next. Sean Keener will come up.
Ma'am, can I ask that you take your seat? Ma'am, can I ask that you take your seat? Can I ask that you take your seat? Thank you.
You let Mrs. Marino know. I expected her not to show up, because she is a coward and couldn't even face us.
David Piazza is next. Sean Keener. And after that, Tom and Jackson the Ninja.
Good evening, my name is Sean Keener, and I'm a forensic science teacher at Oswego High School. I am in my 20th year at Oswego High School and have been a part of many changes in the district. I would like to speak about what I have experienced in my classes, in our hallways and speaking to many students and several staff throughout this past year, and most recently the past few weeks. As a veteran teacher in Oswego, I've had the opportunity and privilege to teach As a veteran teacher in Oswego, I've had the opportunity and privilege to teach, coach, and mentor many generations of students. This past year, I have observed a significant decrease in student participation, an even larger decrease in student motivation, a noticeable increase in student frustration, and more mental health and anxiety issues than ever before. Yes, the pandemic has a major impact on that. However, many students have mentioned to me that they feel, wearing a mask in school, that they cannot connect with friends, teachers, counselors, and other students when wearing this. Expressionless, eerily quiet, distant looks make up the majority of students I have in class, while similar comments have been stated by teachers I have spoken to. This concerns me deeply, that this is affecting our youth more than we know. My son attends a local school where mask mandates have become optional, and he has been chosen not to wear his, and has commented that he and his friends, appears, are much happier, more productive, and overall feel back to normal. If you walk down the hallways at OHS, you will see dozens or even more students with masks below their noses and some under their chins. Although our deans and staff try, do try and get them to put them on correctly, it is just too many to manage. It has also caused some tension among students and staff, as many are tired of being told, and honestly tired of wearing them all day. This is not a recent occurrence either, and yet we have not seen a large increase in COVID cases. COVID is not going away anytime soon. It is another virus that we will have to adjust to and continue to manage as we move forward. But effective education, quality mental health, and happiness of our students and staff is also forefront for you to consider. Some things to consider is the ability of our students to get the vaccine with a booster, and having 93% of one of our most vulnerable groups, those age 65 and older, being vaccinated in Kendall County. Also, data shows that Omicron is much less severe than infection from prior variants despite its transmissibility. The last point I would hope you would consider is the questionable effectiveness of cloth masks. In its most recent update, the CDC stated that cloth masks provide the least amount of protection from the virus. Most students that I see in the classes and in the hallways have a form of a cloth mask. A data table from the Wall Street Journal titled "Why Cloth Masks Might Not Be Enough As Omicron Spreads" shows that a cloth mask provides 20 minutes of potential protection from a person not infected, and 27 minutes of potential protection from a person wearing a cloth mask who is infected. This potential protection is only true if the mask is worn correctly every minute of the school day. Seeing a student smile is more powerful now than ever, and I truly believe it can create an uplifting environment during these difficult times.
Thank you so much.
So in conclusion, I'm asking the school board to reconsider making it an optional.
Tom and Jackson. Tom and Jackson will be next, and Kevin Johnson, Kevin Johnson may come up.
So go ahead. My name is Tom Nannigay, and right here are two children that decided to not wear a mask on Monday at Thompson Junior High. The first two days, they were sent home with unexcused absences. The third and fourth day, they were in school suspension. These kids chose that they did not want to wear a mask. It is a personal right, and this is Jackson's letter that he wrote and sent to the board, and I knew they probably wouldn't get to them all, but here is his letter. "The reason I don't want to wear a mask. As an American citizen, I have my rights to kindly say no to a mask. The mask is ruining the way I learn. The mask makes it hard to hear from certain distance. I have a hard time because of my ADHD. It gets me distracted by twisting the strings on my finger. If the mask is too tight, it can get uncomfortable and it can hurt. At gym, we have to wear one, and if you get sweaty, it can cause acne. Many masks are thin material that might not even work, and when you put the mask on, it can leave a hole at the top and bottom that is letting the germs to get in. All of the same germs on you will stay on the mask and give you a higher chance of getting COVID. This is why we should have a choice if we want to wear a mask or not. Other school districts have the option to wear it or not. Why can't we? America is a free country, meaning the citizens should have the choice to wear a mask or not. This is why America should have a chance to kindly say no." Mr. Batnick, I know you just mentioned Oswego and the choices that they're making and the things they're doing, but I ask you, what about Yorkville? What about Wheaton? What about Batavia? What about St. Charles? What about Elgin? They chose to protect our kids. Thank you.
Kevin Johnson will speak next. I have a hard time reading that name. I think it's Dee Schindler. Look, you may come up.
Who's speaking now?
Kevin.
My name is Kevin Johnson. I speak to you, I want you to hear where I come from. I'm an executive of a Fortune 300 company. Who's? I just want you to know where I'm coming from. I'm a president or a senior vice president in a Fortune 300 company. Our company has chosen not to wear masks due to legalities around them, so I want you to pay attention to that. But more importantly, I think the kids have spoken, the adults have spoken. I'm more afraid of what's going to happen after this, because it's going to end at some point. But what I'm hearing between the adults that are very passionate about their children in this room today, a lot of similarities, but we're concentrated on the differences. I'm responsible for 3,000-plus people every day. I deal with mental health issues every day, and a lot of it's from the pandemic, a lot of it's from how their children are behaving. So I want you to hear this, and I wish I could make this, for all of you that are here, I love you all. I have my opinions. I love your children, the board, you have an important job to do, the police have an important job to do, but you guys, we're together in this. The masks do not work. I got more evidence than I care to share. Other states have gone about doing the right thing. Do the right thing, and then we can start repairing the relationships that we've killed with this pandemic. So many friends, so many people I respect have been torn by this pandemic. That's more important to fix than talking about trivial masks that don't work, and we all know that. Come on. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Let's get together and discover how we're going to get through this. How are we going to show that love to one another? That's important. None of this is important right now to me. None of it. It's torn up my family. My daughter is scared to death of taking her mask off because she doesn't understand the facts. I try to educate my children on facts. What the hell's wrong with this education system that doesn't deal in facts? So just to end, know that I love you all, every single one of you. I don't give a shit about your opinions. Everybody's allowed to have their own. I love you because you're people. I love you because you're passionate about your children, the fact you're here. Let's decide what we're going to do to get along. That's all I ask.
Dee Schindler will speak next, and Leila Irizari may come up.
I almost don't want to follow the Johnsons. All right. I am going to finish for Joanne. If the following action does not stop within 24 hours of this notice, I will move forward and file a claim against your bond in Bobby Dufkus, Principal Assurance Agency, A Marsh and McLennan Agency. Number one, immediately cease the enforcement of the illegal executive order 2021-18, EO 18, or any subsequent order to come, which requires school districts to make the use of masks for students and teachers mandatory who occupy their buildings. Number two, immediately cease the enforcement of the illegal executive order 2021-22, or EO 22, or any subsequent order to come, which requires persons who are both unvaccinated from COVID-19 and work in Illinois schools to provide weekly negative results of an approved COVID-19 test in order to occupy school buildings. Number three, immediately cease the enforcement of the illegal executive order 2021-24, or EO 24, or any subsequent order to come, which requires that school districts refuse students and teachers admittance to their buildings for specified periods of time if the student or teacher is a close contact of a confirmed or probable COVID-19 case. And number four, stop coercing all forms of COVID-19 propaganda concerning how dangerous this is to our parents and our grandparents, to our children. We've all seen you be served, it was all handed out, you now have your 24 hours notice.
Leila will speak next, and Jim Huguenin may come up. Jim H. Leila will be speaking next, and Jim Huguenin, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, can come up next.
Good evening. My name is Leila, and I am a sixth grader at Chawber Junior High. I'm a gifted honor roll student, band member, and student athlete. I've been an SD 308 student since kindergarten. Today, I'm here to talk to the board about my experience at school this week and how it has affected my mental health. I've spent three days in ISS for not wearing a mask. This week, I've had a lack of education. Most teachers have not sent work for me, even after being asked to by email. I have missed one-time class opportunities in some classes. I have not been a part of group projects. I am not being kept informed about what I'm missing. I've been given random busy work that does not match my subjects, for example, worksheets about states. I've also experienced intimidation by staff. I saw a teacher sternly grab another student in ISS by the shoulder. I've been pulled out of ISS to have conversations with my principal's, in my principal's office. I've, and I've been alone in there, left in there, waiting for her to talk to me for at least one class period. I've spoken to, I've been spoken to with stern scolding-type voices, followed by apologies only to be spoken the same way later. Many students support me, but are scared to be treated like I have been. Some students have been unkind, have been unkind, and have unkind things to say. They've been mocking me, calling me Miss No Mask. This week has been hard on my mental health. I've been alone while isolated, anxious when pulled into my principal's office, sad to hear about how my little sisters are being treated in ISS. I'm fed up and confused about why I'm being unreasonably disciplined compared to my friends and family in nearby districts. Thank you for listening to a very small portion of my story. I'm pleading with you to please make a change and let me make my fair choice for my body.
Tim will speak next, and Joshua Monch may come up.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Jim Huguenin. I'm a 20-year-plus member of this school district, and we recognize you as being victims in this pandemic also, but following suit of a criminal governor issuing emergency orders are a violation of our federally protected constitutional rights. You are aiding and abetting a felon. He will be arrested for crimes against humanity, and he will be prosecuted. Okay, so now that you've been warned of what's going on, in your refusal to vote tonight, we, the people, are formally serving you a notice of termination for violation of oath of office. We, the people of Oswego School District 308, are representing our best interest, in particular, the best interest of our students that have been silenced, violated, infringed upon, abused, and provided dishonest information regarding the unlawful and unhealthy mask mandates. Through the ordering of forced compliance, you have instilled fear in our students and been detrimental to their health and happiness. This is because of the decisions made by this board regarding the instituting and enforcing of Oswego School District Policy 7165, students' use of masks during a pandemic. We, the people of School District 308, fully assert our God-given, unalienable rights, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of the State of Illinois, as we terminate you from our elected governor body for violating the oath of office you affirmed to uphold. Failure to comply with the notices given and the demands stated by we, the people, including the following federal and state rights infringements and the federal and state criminal offenses committed by the instituting of Oswego School District Policy 7165. We, the people of the School District 308, officially and undeniably, as the governing tax body, order school board members to cease and desist all activities regarding your respective board positions effective 2/10/22 at 10:00 p.m. We, the people, lay claim that the following federal constitutional protected rights and laws have been breached, broken, and infringed upon by the instituting and enforcing of School District Policy 7165. First Amendment right to assemble, freedom of speech, right to religious freedom, 18 U.S.C. 242, deprivation of rights under color of law, 18 U.S.C. 241, conspiracy against rights, 18 U.S.C. 245, federally protected activities, 18 U.S.C. 1001, false statement of entries, 18 U.S.C. 247, obstruction of person and free exercise of religious beliefs, USC Section 514, fictitious obligations, USC 52, Century Rights Act, discrimination in a public place, U.S. Title, Section 12101, unlawful to deny entry to person with a disability. We, the people, are aware that pursuant action on the following federal statutes-
Thank you, sir.
-is lawful and appropriate course of action for securing justice.
Thank you, sir.
42 U.S.C. 1983, civil action for-
Thank you, sir. Joshua will be next. Michaela Humilty will be next.
Sir, can I ask you to please?
Mr. Huguenin, you're using other people's time now. Please, thank you.
Joshua?
I call a recess for 10 minutes.
So I would like, I would like to remind everyone, testing, testing, I would like to remind everyone of our Policy 8:30. The school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all individuals on school property or at a school event. No person on school property or at a school event shall, including visitors, students, or employees, perform any of the following. Item 11, impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with any school activity or function. Item number 16, engage in any conduct that interferes, disrupts, or adversely affects a district or school.
Thank you. I want to just say, we want to hear from as many of you all as possible, and so the least amount of, the least amount of interruptions will allow us to hear from as many of you as possible. So please, I'm asking that you give everyone the opportunity to be heard, that came here to be heard, because we really want to hear what you have to say. And so what we, what will happen is, we hope that we will continue in the manner in which is civil and respectful, and so as long as we're going in that direction, we'll continue to hear those who've came to speak. And if we have to recess again, we will adjourn our meeting for the night. Thank you.
Joshua will speak next, and Michaela Humidi may come up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to address you and to address all the residents of Oswego today. My name is Josh Mensch, I'm a father of three young kids, two of whom are in one of your elementary schools. I've got a first grader who's never for a single solitary day of her school life but in a classroom without a mask. I've got a third grader, who when she meets a new friend at the beginning of the school year, has to meet them, bond with them, connect with them, form a friendship with them, based on seeing three inches of the other kid's face, from the bridge of the nose to the top of the eyebrows. How do you do that? How do you do that, even as an adult, but much less as a little kid? I want to stress from the outset, this isn't an issue that's about left versus right, or conservative versus liberal, or Democrat versus Republican. It isn't about politics or ideology, it's about basic human decency. And frankly, at this point, it's about fear, and it's about facts. And this district, this state, and even this board are wildly behind the evolving science and data on these topics. Many of the 500 largest school districts in our nation never even had mask mandates, and of those that did, more than 60 have dropped those mandates since October. Just in the last week, Democratic governors in New Jersey, Delaware, Connecticut, Oregon, have all lifted mask mandates in schools, or set a firm deadline for doing so in the coming weeks. And increasingly, public health experts are speaking out too. Dr. Lianna Wen, public health professor at George Washington University, and a leading CNN medical analyst, said last month, quote, "Clos masks are little more than facial decorations," end quote, when it comes to Omicron. And we know exclusively that's what our kids are wearing in schools, facial decorations. She wrote an op-ed earlier this week, Dr. Wen, and she said circumstances have changed, cases are falling rapidly. Quote, "Masking in schools can now move from a government-imposed mandate to an individual decision," end quote. Dr. Gianna Noble, an emergency physician at the University of California at San Francisco, said, and I quote, in the same op-ed, Washington Post, four days ago, "If we want to preserve trust and respect for public health, we need to pivot when the data tells us that we should." She called for an end to mask mandates. She said, quote, "To say that masking doesn't have any harm to children goes against decades of child development research." So if the board wants to actually follow the science moving forward, and I'd suggest you do it before February 28th, you can't hide behind metrics anymore that Dr. Sparland admitted earlier you adopted months and months and months and months ago, when we didn't even know what Omicron was. We didn't even know it existed, we thought it was a villain from a Transformers movie. But now we do know about it, and we should start acting like it. It's endemic, we all know that, and it's time to learn to live with it. The harm posed to developing kids by continued mask-wearing, at this stage of the pandemic especially, far outweighs any of the de minimis benefits of masking kids. And I finish with this, I think it's fitting that we're having this board meeting in the performing arts center of one of our local high schools. Because at this point, masks on kids in schools, it's just that, it's performance, it's public health theater. And it's time you close the curtain on mask mandates now. Thank you.
Michaela will speak next. Michaela and Nathan Brown can come up.
Hello, I would like to say thank you to our Board of Education for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Michaela Humidi, and I'm a junior at OHS.
This is Cassie LaRusso.
Bree King.
Kayla LaChapelle.
I would like to speak tonight on the events that have unfolded this week at Oswego High School due to the temporary restraining order that Judge Griscow put in place. I would like to say thank you for denying me the right to go to class on Monday. I would like to say thank you for denying me the right to use the bathroom without an escort. I would like to say thank you for denying me and my fellow peers the right to use the vending machines when we are hungry, for denying us the right to use a drinking fountain, and denying us the right to go to our lockers. Thank you for not allowing us to leave a room we were placed in, but we were not in trouble, right? I would like to say thank you to the teacher who was monitoring us, stating we were incompetent and stupid for wanting to stand up for ourselves and our rights. Thank you for putting us in a room with kids who are actually being punished, but we were not in trouble, right? Thank you for teaching us that we need to believe in ourselves and we need to stand up for ourselves, but when we do, we get denied the right to our education. I would most of all like to say thank you for denying us the right to sign into our classes online, even though we were being held in a room by your staff for not wearing a piece of fabric on our faces. A piece of fabric that is proven to not stop the spread of COVID-19 virus, a piece of fabric that studies have proven is actually harming our bodies in the long run. Science Daily released an article from a study conducted at Swansea University that stated scientists have uncovered potentially dangerous chemical pollutants that are released from disposable face masks. The research reveals high level of pollutants, including lead, antimony, and copper, within the silicone-based and plastic fibers of common disposable face masks. Yet we are still being forced to wear these masks all day, every day, right? We are being forced to wear a piece of fabric that is causing children to have panic attacks because it spikes their anxiety due to the feeling of being restrained and not being able to breathe. Governor JB Pritzker released a statement saying that on February 28th, the mask mandate will be lifted from everywhere but schools, so it is up to you to make the choice. As our Board of Education, we beg of you to lift the mandate and give us the right to choose. These are our bodies, masks should be our choice. As of now, we are one of the only districts around that are still enforcing the mandate. Over 200 schools are now mask optional, yet we still are not. So for all of this, thank you. Thank you for forcing us to not have a choice. Thank you for teaching us that standing up for ourselves gets us punished. Thank you for denying us the right to our education. Thank you.
After this next speaker, we will be at 60 minutes, and we have 15 left. Okay. Nathan will be next, Elsa Clausen can come up.
Hi there, I'm Nathan Brown. I have three children, two at Trabber and one at Southbury, and pardon, my phone's not, you ever have a hard time turning your phone on with their mask on, it's the absolute worst. Hey, so look, first of all, I want to thank the teachers, all right? The school board has put you in a terrible position, terrible position. I know you're all working hard, and most of you are turning with a smile, some of them are losing their patience, I'm sure, like the young lady was just saying. Some of them are losing their patience, I'm sure, like the young lady was just saying.
Sir, can you talk into the mic?
Yeah, you bet. Sorry, it's, it's a little weird because I do want to talk to the people too. Alright, so listen, anyway, the board has put the teachers in a terrible spot, right? Look, call for a vote tonight. You know, amend the policy. It's very simple. You don't need, you've heard all of it. Amend the policy tonight. Find the courage to stand up against the mandate. Now listen, I wrote that before Dr. Marino decided not to show up tonight. Okay? I don't care. Still have the vote. It doesn't matter. You have a quorum. Make it happen tonight. February twenty eighth is too late. Listen, alright, this is not about masks. It's, it's not about masks. This is about choice, a family's choice on what they feel is best for themselves. Countless Americans have fought and died defending our freedom to choose. It's the ability to choose that makes us inherently American. And who are you to strip that away? I'm not a doctor or a scientist, man. I'm just a dad. I'm a coach. The fact that my second grader cannot see her teacher's face or her friend's faces on a regular basis, she has meltdowns because she has sensory issues about wearing that damn thing on her face. And then my son's face, he turns bright red when running up and down the basketball court, gasping for breath. It's gotta end. It's gotta end now. Hey, unfortunately, you know, you find yourself here in this position. It's a very difficult position. Likely one you did not expect to find yourself in. But, but, you know, listen, this is supposed to be about protecting others. However, I'm finding, I'm sitting here, and I'm feeling like it's, it's something about control. It's not about protecting others. It has to be about control. It's the only thing that makes sense. Look, I'm sure you are all very, very intelligent people, so I don't have to waste your time talking about the science. The science that clearly says that masks aren't working. The science that says that in a public place on February twenty eighth, we can remove the mask, but not in schools, not for the least vulnerable. That makes no sense. We can't, that makes no sense, guys. But look, like I said, I don't have to waste your time because you guys are very intelligent people. But I have to ask, what is it about? Control? Is it about money? Is it about blind loyalty to a party? Is it about a union, or even a beautiful corrupt politician named J.B. Pritzker? The fact is, this is no longer about the medical science. This is strictly an exercise in political science. Thank you very much.
Elsa Clausen is next. And Dina Riddle may come up.
My name is Elsa Clausen, and I'm a senior at Oswego East High School. Since the fall, I have complied with the executive order which requires all individuals under the age of two and who can medically tolerate a face covering to wear a face covering when in indoor public places. While I don't agree with it, I never protested or caused a disturbance. But when a ruling by Sagamon County Judge Raylene Grishow on the temporary restraining order that would prohibit enforcement on face mask vaccination and COVID testing mandates came out, I was thrilled thinking that I no longer had to wear a mask. When I walked into school on Tuesday and Wednesday without a mask, I was punished with an in-school suspension. Then I was confused. The masks were inconsistently enforced during the executive order, so why was the staff enforcing it because of a simple board policy? If I'm sitting in a classroom, it is required that the mask covers my nose and mouth. But at the indoor homecoming dance for juniors and seniors, almost no students were wearing the mask at all. At basketball games, almost our entire student section wears it below their nose or even lower. None of this is enforced. I wonder why all of this is okay, but if I don't have it at least wrapped around my chin, I'm somehow a germ, and I will make everyone sick. The science shows the inconsistencies too. As of February fourth, twenty twenty-two, the CDC proved that cloth and surgical masks are far less effective in stopping the spread of COVID-19. If this is the case, and the goal in school is to keep everyone safe, why are these masks allowed? I'll answer that. Because it is too difficult to enforce and pass out N-95 masks to everyone in school. That seems to be a common trend at the school. When rules are too difficult to enforce, they are either changed or ignored. Look at what happened to social distancing and contact tracing. They are practiced to a far lesser extent than it was originally, if at all. If you think my ideas are too extreme or radical because they don't conform, you can thank the staff at Oswego East High School for teaching me how to think critically and independently. My college prep stats class taught me how to interpret data and recognize how and when stats can be skewed or biased. My psychology class taught me about the Solomon Ash experiment that showed that seventy-six percent of people conform to group pressure even when they know it's incorrect. My AP Government and Politics class taught me that our country was founded out of necessary rebellion by a group of average men who were fed up with arbitrary and tyrannical laws. My AP US History class taught me to follow Martin Luther King Jr.'s footsteps and protest peacefully and respectfully. While frustrated, I did my best to treat staff with complete respect even after being placed in ISI. And lastly, programs such as SLIP, Howell, and Track and Field have put me in positions of leadership and taught me how to speak up for myself and for what I believe is right. I am here not only to represent my concerns, but also a large percentage of the students at Oswego East High School who are silenced or canceled for their beliefs. I have always respected all opinions and would never ridicule a student or staff member for their choices, including continuing to wear a mask if they were optional. All we are asking is to have the choice, is to leave the choice of masking up to individuals, students, and staff. Please make SD three oh eight mask optional. Thank you.
Dina Riddle will speak next, and Taylor and Jackson may come up.
Hi, I'm Dina Riddle, from Plano. Just want to say that I have spoke to three cardiologists, and I keep hearing that you guys are all about the safety of the children, but I tend to think differently. What the, we all know the masks don't work, first of all. You know, make it make sense. The cardiologists say that what happens is you are not breathing normally like you're supposed to breathe, so you're not getting the oxygen to your extremities and to your organs, and it does long-term damage to these children and yourself. And what I do see everywhere I go is it's, you know, the people like you up here who, you are afraid. The kids are not afraid. You're afraid. So what I say nutritionally is, if you're that afraid, then start exercising, lose some weight, do all the things you're supposed to do, eat right. You know, and, and yeah, instead of taking it out on the kids. And I say unmask the kids. That's all.
Taylor and Jackson are next, and Cynthia Rook may come up.
Hi, my name is Taylor Schuman. I go to Thompson Junior High. I'm in sixth grade, and wearing a mask is not easy. You go to every class, you have to wear a mask, and you, like, when you stop doing it just because you want to make a difference, you get all these looks. We, me and my friend walked past the hallway to go to a room where we were placed and talked to several times, waiting to, they wanted to change our mind, but they could try multiple times, but we have our rights, and we're not going to change our rights. And so, like I said, we got so many looks, and most of those were from teachers and one of the assistant principals, that they looked, that they were disgusted at us. One of my favorite teachers was even threatened with his job if he was, if he talked to us. So I have my rights, and you got, you can try to change it, but it will not be changed.
Cynthia Rook will speak next, or, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, so we, sorry. We have to go in a room for eight hours a day, and if we don't have any work, we just sit there doing nothing. But if we want to go to the bathroom, we have to go to an all-genders bathroom. You might as well put a cat litter in there for that. And we can't get our own lunch when we eat lunch with our masks down. And I just don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Cynthia Rook will speak next, and Kelly Gillan, Gillanwater? Can come up.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Rook, and I'm a parent of two children in SD three oh eight. First, I'd like to say to all the journalists who are here this evening, I do hope that you are finding yourself speaking to the many children who spoke tonight and to the wonderful teacher who was brave enough to speak up. I would love to see their voices represented in the newspapers tomorrow. Not that gentleman that's, that was rude and spoke, did it go off? Oh, okay. Alright, sorry. Not the gentleman who was rude and spoke over everybody tonight. He does not represent us. The people who represent us are the wonderful teachers, parents, and the amazing students tonight who've said everything that needs to be said. I had a speech here written tonight. I don't even need to say anything. We, you, you've heard everything from the kids that you need to know. I do, I will say this. I do remember being here maybe about six months ago. Several times I've been here over the course of the past couple of years. And we were a smaller group, a much smaller group then. And you told us that we were just a small group of people. We were made to feel like our opinions didn't matter, and that we were somehow some sort of fringe movement. There's no way you can ignore us tonight. I think maybe we heard two voices that were pro-mask mandates. Listen to the people who are here. These are your constituents. We elected you to listen to us. We're here tonight. Please, please, do your job that you were elected to do for the community. I don't know why I can't speak well into this mic. So please, take a vote. Vote tonight. Do not wait any longer. Our kids cannot tolerate the physical abuse and the mental abuse. Please, stop it. Our children are literally begging you. Thank you.
Kelly will speak next, and Logan Oster may come up.
I'm Kelly Gillanwater. As of today, six hundred and ninety-eight days have passed since you sent our children home and locked them out of their education. Two weeks, we were told. Had you told me two years ago today that our children would be abused and neglected, I would have said, no way. They're all court-mandated reporters. They won't let this happen. Instead, you have, according to the Illinois Board of Education policy, you are charged with employing a superintendent and other personnel making employment decisions, dismissing personnel, including determining whether an employee has willfully or negligently failed to report an incident of suspected child abuse or neglect as required by three-two-five ILCS five, and establishing an equal employment opportunity policy that prohibits unlawful discrimination. According to Statute one oh five ILCS five twenty-two twelve, preventing or interfering with a child's attendance at school whoever by threat, menace, or intimidation prevents any child entitled to attend a public or non-public school in this state from attending such school or interferes with any such child's attendance at that school shall be guilty of a class A misdemeanor. Every single one of you, including the police officers in this room, myself and several others, are court-mandated reporters. And to my knowledge, none of you have filed charges against the Governor Pritzker or yourselves, your staff. The police officers refuse to go and do well checks on students when their parents call. They're being told they're not allowed in the building. This is not okay. The CDC, ADA, FAP, and the Department of Child Family and Services described our, the definition of child abuse and neglect is "an act or series of acts of commission or omission by a parent or caregiver, examples clergy, coach, teacher, that results in harm to a child. Any recent act or failure to act on the part of a parent or caretaker which results in death, serious physical or emotional harm, sexual abuse, or exploitation, an act of failure to act which presents an imminent risk or serious harm. What you've been doing to our children is also referred to as Munchausen syndrome or factitious disorder, as defined by the Mayo Clinic, a serious mental disorder in which someone discusses, deceives others by appearing sick, purposely getting sick, or by self-injury." I also want to state to you something. Every child is entitled to due process, and every individual, and I know of none, and I've talked to nurses, and I've talked to special ed teachers, every student is guaranteed their day to have, be evaluated. Nobody has written a plan that forces a mask on any child.
Thank you.
Logan will speak next, and Dylan Oster can come up.
Good evening. My name is Logan, and I'm a sixth grader at Plank Junior High. I would like to share with you a little bit about my beliefs and experience in school in the last four days in regards to our school policy on masks. I believe students should be given a choice to wear a mask or not. The amount of bacteria that grows in the mask that we wear all day is gross, and it makes it difficult to breathe through, especially during classes like gym or when we have to speak aloud in class. Also, I miss seeing my friends' faces every day. I don't think it's right to force us to wear something we don't want to wear just because others are scared of getting sick from a virus that has caused less than one percent of deaths among kids. You are, you are breaking the judge's ruling that we shouldn't have to wear the mask any longer. I have a right to due process, which means that you have to get a court order to provide that I am, that I am a health hazard in order to require that I need to wear a mask. Every day this week, I've been in in-school suspension because I have lightly refused to wear a mask. We have started with our desks three feet apart on Monday. On Tuesday, we each have wooden walls put around our desks. On Wednesday, we came to find our desks on opposite sides of the walls, opposite sides of the room, and the walls put, and they still put the wooden walls around our desks. We aren't allowed to talk to each other, and the teachers don't talk to us either. It feels like they're purposely isolating us from each other to intimidate us and make us feel alone. I just want to go back to class, see my friends, and get an education, and I have a, and I have a right to do without my mask. My last thing I want to say, masks suck.
Dylan will speak next. Stephen Landrum may come up.
My name is Dylan. I'm a fourth grader at Boulder Hill Elementary. I just want to say right now that masks suck. Why do you enforce, why do you force us to wear these masks? Why don't we have an option in wearing them? We should have freedom of choice. We should be the ones choosing whether or not we want to wear masks or not. We, I have done in-school suspension all this week in a room by myself. Some of the teachers who have supervised me interact a bit. Rarely does anyone even ask me how I am doing or if I need anything. I would like to resume classes again without masks and continue my learning. I would like to resume my freedom, and so do my classmates. They want no more masks, and I want their freedom, and want their freedom of choice back, and so do I. I am standing up for the, for those students who are too scared of getting in trouble. So let us get back to our old ways without masks and resume our freedom and right to do an, and right to an education.
Stephen Landrum will speak next, and Donna Sawicki may come up. Go ahead, Donna.
Oh, I thought there was someone before me. Okay. I'm Donna Sawicki. I'm a parent of two high schoolers at OHS, and I'm also an Oswego Township trustee. I've had several things to say, but I'll start with the students that are speaking tonight and the ones that have been in school suspension. It is like breaking my heart because this is so unfair. I can't help but not think, like, segregation? This is going against, like, we talk about equity. That is the huge thing promoted and talked about right now. And how is this even teaching equity? And I want to talk about one of the things I was originally going to say. It's just what's going on in our community right now, and which makes it worse with what's happening with this in-school suspension and how it's not fair. Because, so, I know firsthand that right before Christmas, COVID cycled through the entire cheer team at OHS. Without any rhyme or reason, people tested positive regardless of being vaccinated or not. I can tell you that the majority of those that tested positive only had a headache and some congestion. A couple had a mild fever, but recovered quickly. In my opinion, I can confidently say COVID is very mild in children and adolescents. As we moved through Christmas break and into the new year, it seemed that almost everyone I talked to had some kind of encounter with COVID. especially parents and students at OHS. So much so that I feel that everyone at OHS has either had COVID or been exposed to it. Again, vaccination status did not seem to matter whether people got it or not. And I know some that were fully vaccinated and boosted that were sicker than people that were not vaccinated. So how do you explain that? I also want to mention then that, oh, first, it makes me question if our numbers are lower because we have reached herd immunity from exposure and not necessarily the vaccine. Either way, at this point, it makes the mandate seem pointless. Recently, I have been in the school to drop off lunches and attend several basketball games. I have seen staff with masks down on their chins. I have seen kids with masks on their chins as they made TikToks in the halls. Most of the basket, most of the basketball players have their masks down on their chins, which I can't blame them for because they can't breathe through them while running up and down the court. Coaches are pulling down the masks to shout out plays. I know my time.
Thank you.
Christina Hayes. And Christina Hayes. After that would be Krista Lewandowski may come up. Krista Lewandowski will be up next.
A lot of the things I wanted to say were already said by others, so it's a little bit choppy. I apologize for not being fluid in my speech. The American Federation of Teachers President Randy Weingarten had an interview where she had spoken and said that she was theoretically in favor of masking, of a masking off-ramp, but only when the spread was low enough that there was no dissemination or transmission in schools or when the vax rate was at least 80%. But COVID-19 is not going away entirely anytime soon. There will always be the possibility of one student transmitting the disease to another healthy young people, or at very little risk of severe illness. And whether they choose to get vaccinated is really no one's business but their own. She went on to add, "How do we make sure that everybody feels safe repeatedly? If you wait for the rates to get where everybody feels safe all the time, we'll be waiting forever. The appearance of safety appears to be more important than the facts." Indeed, one of MSNBC's other guests, Dr. Lucy McBride, said that mask mandates are doing more harm than good. This is not March 2020, there are vaccines for those who want them. Those who want a one-way mask can do so using a well-fitted KF94, KN95, or N95. It does a good job of protecting the wearer and is not dependent on the behavior of other people. We need to lift this restriction as kids are suffering from learning loss, from the lack of social connection to their peers. There is no convincing evidence in the real world that masking children in schools makes a significant difference in transmission in schools, she said. Many students have gone two years without regularly seeing the faces of their teachers and classmates. When Weingarten is speaking and needs to be heard, she understands that it is better to remove her mask and did so during a recent conference appearance. Why would this be any different in the classroom for everyone? This virus is now at an endemic stage, we need to learn to live with it. Our children must be free. The district will end up on the wrong side of history if this continues. This debate is really about keeping district adults feeling safe versus what is best for the children. The harm masking has done and continues to do to our kids, including impairing their social, emotional, and educational growth. And as a heads up to the district adults, the masking and restrictions are the reason for the uptick in negative behaviors that they've been so upset about lately, so let's be done with it already.
Ashley Gentile, Ashley Gentile.
I had one more sentence at the end, I'm sorry. Other districts are dealing with kids bullying on both sides after the masks have become optional. So maybe we could start a program going forward to help them learn in peace together.
The next person to come up would be Michael Donovan.
I'm Krista Lewandowski, I thought you mentioned my name.
Oh, I didn't see you come up.
Okay, okay, it's a continuation because I did email you guys and no one responded. So we would like an explanation why you dismissed the judge's ruling without the parents input first. And also for failing to tell us where in the law it authorizes you to create an unconstitutional mandate policy 7165. Parents never signed or agreed to the policy. We also never agreed to the governor's mandate. This is why a judge with common sense ruled in our favor of our constitutional rights. It doesn't matter what you believe or feel, what matters is what is legal. However, in the end, what this board did was to take away our freedom to choose, and this should scare anyone much more than COVID. I wish that you would open your eyes to the reality of the mess politicians in Illinois have made. The shutdowns in mask-wearing have done more damage to people than the pandemic itself. Wake up and trust in God. Okay, since I can't read all this, I'm going to go with this part. "The judge's ruling puts all schools and districts and their staff on notice as to the legality of their policies. Any school district continuing to enforce these illegal policies after her ruling are exposing their district board members, administrators, and teachers to potential significant financial risk. Civil rights claims for knowingly violating constitutional protected rights would possibly not be covered by the school's insurance policy, leaving the district board members and administrators, teachers' personal assets exposed. knowingly violating due process right is a serious issue. This is why almost 300 districts in the state have switched to fully mask optional policies and abandoned vaccination testing policies on their own volition. Their lawyers assuredly advise them of this risk. It's possible you may be continuing with illegal policies in hopes that the appellate court disagrees with the trial court. But that is a serious gamble, because if you are wrong, I am putting you on notice right now." Sorry. "...that the district, as well as every board member, administrator, and teacher involved, is going to be sued by me for civil rights violations against my children." That is from Tom DeVore. You know who he is.
Ashley Gentile will be next. And...
Hi, my name's Ashley Gentile, and I'm shaking like the leaf right now. But I am a mother of one child. We have a daughter at Fox Chase, and I am representing myself and my special needs daughter. Excuse me, this has been really difficult for us. I'm going to go ahead and just read my email that was sent because no one responded to it, and it has some extremely poignant facts in it. Excuse me, my daughter has been, we moved from a different district to Oswego specifically for the education here. We had a, I'm sorry. My daughter, I am speaking up for my daughter today because she can't, because she doesn't have a voice, she literally doesn't. My daughter has a speech disorder called a praxia, and it is a disconnect between her brain and her mouth. What she needs is to see, visually see, the way that people make a sound, a single sound. Because of this, she has made very little progress in school. She cannot even, as an eight-year-old, make a blend sound of an S-H because she is not able to see, visually see, what is going on with a mouth when it needs to be made. Additionally, I myself have been in a classroom, I myself have been a substitute teacher's assistant, and I myself have seen the abuse done to children, both physically and verbally. The mental abuse that's been done to these children. I have seen a teacher and a teacher's aide who have physically required a child to wear a mask, even though this child had the exemption. I have physically seen with my two eyes that every time this child took off their mask, the teacher had a plethora of masks available, and they immediately put another one on her. They physically had to hold her down to put it on her. This is completely unacceptable, and this is not going to happen to my child anymore. You guys have the right tonight. You have the right tonight to make that decision. Please, stand up for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Michael Donovan is next, and Raul Diaz may come up.
I thought the kids were going to be a tough act to follow. Guys, I had a lot planned, I had it all written out. Credit to the teachers in this district, from what I've seen from the students tonight, they expressed this perfectly. There is no upside to these masks. There is no benefit to these students, in fact, quite the contrary. They are being harmed by this, they are having delays in their education, they are acting up more. I know plenty of teachers, and the district has gotten significantly worse throughout doing this. My question to you, what is the benefit of continuing to persist with bad science that does not have a positive effect on anyone? Why do you persist? You can take the vote tonight, every other district around here has figured this out. Stop hurting our children. Please, I beg of you, make the vote happen tonight. Thank you.
Raul will speak next, and Scott Hanson may come up.
My name's Raul Diaz, my son is a junior at OHS. And, well, I'll say masks should be a choice, not a mandate. So he was forced to participate in online schooling last year when he was exposed to COVID, right? They made him stay home, he had to sign in and do the online courses. This year, he suffered a concussion earlier in January. I thought that it would be, it made sense to me that since he had everything in place for him to participate in classes, and he couldn't be there physically, that he would just log in and participate in online courses. They, or the school, told me that that was not allowed because it's not COVID-related. It didn't make sense to me. I reached out to the school, the nurse told me that it was a state policy. I reached out to the state, the state told me that it was a district policy, and that's why I'm here. It doesn't make any sense for children who have the ability to participate in their daily classroom remotely to not be allowed because it's not COVID-related. If they have a valid medical condition that precludes them from being able to attend in person, why are they not allowed to just sign in on a daily basis so that they can continue to receive their education? Because, I mean, I thought that's what this is all about, right? The kids are learning and continuing to progress. I don't understand why that is a policy that the district has in place and that needs to be looked at, it needs to be restructured, it needs to be amended to allow that particular circumstance so that children who can't go to school can continue to learn from home. And that's, I just want to make sure that it's on the record so that I can pursue it further if nothing comes from it tonight. I'm definitely going to keep digging for answers, trying to get the board or whoever else to look at it and give me some kind of solid answer as to why he can't. I mean, as it stands now, he is back in school, but it took that long. He missed like three weeks total. And he's even truant now because for whatever reason, it's just, I don't know why the school keeps marking him absent when he's home, you know, with a valid reason, but besides the point. Again, I think kids that have a valid reason to be home, medical reason to be home, should be allowed to log in online to participate in their school. And this whole caveat that it has to be COVID-related is just unacceptable and wrong. That's it.
Good evening, board and everyone, my name is Scott Hanson. I am a parent of three children in this district, and I'm a public school teacher myself in a neighboring district who has recently gone mask optional. We, this, this school year, approximately 40% of our staff and students were COVID-positive at some point during the school year. And it's safe to estimate that roughly 50% of our staff and students were vaccinated. I would imagine, and this is a much smaller district where I teach, I would imagine in a district of this size, you know, if you were to do the math there, those numbers are relatively proportional, if not larger. So the data that we should be looking at is who's really in danger? Who are we still protecting? We've all either been sick or we've been vaccinated, and it's time to move on with our lives. So on behalf of everybody here, we ask that you make the decision for the community moving forward, thank you.
Thank you all for your patience. And now we will move to comments by members of our board. And I would like to go out of order and start with our student ambassador report. They've been here a long time, and they've got to be at school tomorrow, so please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Since our last board meeting, Colton and I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Sparland last week to discuss the current status of the student advisory committee work, particularly with the review of the second student survey responses that evaluated the knowledge students had on sexual harassment within our schools and reporting procedures. We discussed our future steps and evaluated the progress of our committee project as well as our committee as a whole.
So the student advisory committee was able to meet with Dr. Waller this past week and began disaggregating the data from that survey that was administered this past January. While we were just in the beginning of sifting through the data, we have found, we have continued to see the importance of the issue to the student body. The data has shown that students are being affected and have noticed trends themselves. As a committee, we work to continue to separate data based on several identity factors to better understand exactly what we are looking for and how that information will shape our progress moving forward. The whole process has really been enlightening to the fact that student voices tell us so much about our district and has revealed the willingness of students to share their voice when given a platform to do so.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have board member comments. Go ahead.
I wanted to take a moment tonight to thank all of our students who have both emailed in their comments and came here to speak tonight. And I know that it was a really hard thing to do to decide to give up those one-time events and all of the different education to take a stand for something you believed in. And it doesn't matter who agrees with what side of what, but I'm finding that I'm pretty darn impressed that our kids are able to take what they believe in, take an action step, and understand what they're going to miss out on when they do that. So thank you very much for speaking up for yourselves tonight and for showing us what you know. I think you did a lot of argumentative essay writing there, so it should be some kind of English credit perhaps, I don't know. Aside from that, you know, this is a really difficult time, I think, for everybody, and it's nothing different than what we've seen over the last two years. We all say that the only constant throughout this entire pandemic situation has been change. And I know that Dr. Sparland had talked earlier that we'll be reviewing these things as well. And I hope that we do, because we do need to take a look at where things are going to go, what will be safe for our community, and what will the burden of removing one measure of safety take and give us as another burden. But I think overall, my favorite comment tonight was the one that said, you know- But I think overall, my favorite comment tonight was the one that said, "You know what? When this is done, we need to be working on how to build together." Because we do. We need to spend time with our kids and help them understand and respect that now that we have an individual choice, whatever day that happens, whatever month that happens or year, that we will work together to teach our kids how to respect each other's choices and to still be able to be friends with people, even if they don't make the same choices as us. That's pretty much all I wanted to say, but thank you for speaking your minds, and thank you for doing it in a respectful way where we could continue our meeting. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? In honor of Black History Month, I'd like to recognize scientist Dr. Kizmika Corbett. Dr. Corbett, age 36, is currently an assistant professor of immunology and infectious disease at both the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health and the Harvard Radcliffe Institute. In 2019, she was lead scientist at the Vaccine Research Center, which is part of the National Institute of Health, and is credited with discovering the genetic code for the COVID-19. Respected scientists agree that Corbett's work will have a substantial impact on ending the worst respiratory disease pandemic in more than 100 years. Dr. Kizzy Corbett's discovery makes possible the viral protection we enjoy today and will help defend against other new viruses. I also wanted to just say that Dr. Marino was not present tonight due to illness and that however, she wanted to express her sincerest apologies for missing this very important meeting.
All right, item 6.3 is the superintendent's report, so good evening, board. I'm gonna keep my comments brief this evening. Mrs. Simmelton, as you just said, the month of February is Black History Month. Black History Month is an important opportunity each year to formally acknowledge the incredible contributions of African-Americans throughout history and today. The cultures, traditions, contributions, resiliency, and profound courage demonstrated by African-Americans have and will continue to shape the story of our nation. We are proud to celebrate Black History Month, to honor the legacy, acknowledge the challenges faced both in the past and today, and commit to working together for a better, more equitable future, providing opportunity for all. Tonight during our presentation of Division 308 Community Partnerships, I think you'll see how the comments I just shared are interconnected to the work we are doing, not only through increased community partnerships, but through the student learning goals and support for student learning throughout our district. That's my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sparland. We do have a board committee report for Policy and Legislative Committee. Is this gonna be Ally or...
Oh, it's gonna be me. No. What? Yeah, so I think we can hold on to those until we review the policies if you guys have any questions. There wasn't a lot of big stuff on there.
So that's it? Okay. Your.
Thank you, Ally.
Go ahead, Dr. Sparland.
I'm done. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir, I'm sorry, but public comment has passed. Thank you for your comments.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I made a motion to adjourn.
But we haven't finished our business.
We have to continue to continue the business that's on there instead of adjourned.
Go ahead, Dr. Sparland.
Item 7.2 is an informational... Do you want to go through informational presentation?
We had a motion on the table. We had a motion on the table.
I made a motion to adjourn.
And I seconded.
Did you second it, Mr. Doyle?
Roll call.
Before we go to a vote, can I have a question?
Mrs. Simmelton? Aye. Mr. Gatewood?
Before I do that, I thought we were going to finish the several items on. Are we...
We still had a couple of items we wanted to get through. Paying of the bills, the personnel report, and the roof.
So I would probably then let's make a motion.
I make a motion that we go to action items.
Okay. So I make a motion to table all items for information.
So you need to finish the vote on the adjournment and then make a vote to go to the items you wanted. Okay, so, all right, so... Nay, I'm gonna say nay? So we can get this over.
Mr. Gatewood?
No.
Mrs. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Serone?
No.
Mrs. Doyle?
No.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjust the agenda, to move to item 8, approval of consent agenda. Second.
Second.
Yeah, you just have to wait another second because I have to refresh.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, so that gets you to the consent agenda, now you have to vote on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Aye. Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Dr. Marino? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
I make a motion to move to item 10, action items.
Can I have a motion to approve the bills for payment, please?
We first need to vote to move. So I need a second on the motion to move to item 10. Eugene seconded.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Latonya, motion passes.
Motion passes 6-0. Can I have a motion to approve the bills for payment, please?
Do you have the... My computer won't refresh. Sorry, Ursula.
Go ahead, Or.
I make a motion to approve item 10.1, bills for payment.
Aye. To authorize the payment of bills in the amount of $29,545,469.72 as presented.
Second.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. 10.2, approval of partial roof project at Oswego High School. Can I have a motion to approve the partial roof project at Oswego High School, please?
I make a motion to approve a contract with J.L. Adler Roofing for the base bid and the three alternates for $2,238,610 as presented.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. 10.3, approval of board policies, second read. Can I have a motion to approve the board policies presented for second read, please?
I make a motion to approve the board policies. Section 2, school board, 2:20, 2:110, 2:260. Section 4, operational services, 4:160, 4:170. Section 5, general personnel, 5:10, 5:20, 5:50, 5:100, 5:150. Section 6, instruction, 6:50, 6:120. And section 7, students, 7:70, 7:80, 7:180, and 7:345.
Second.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. 10.4, approval of personnel report. Can I have a motion to approve the personnel report, please?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
No.
Mrs. Doyle?
No.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2. Anything else we need to do today? Okay, can I have a motion to... Well, if I could just explain for everyone to understand that it is illegal under the Open Meetings Act to make a vote on an action item that was not on the agenda. So unfortunately, respectfully, there's no way for the board to take an action on that matter tonight, but as Dr. Sparland said, they will consider it a future date.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Do we need to table the other items first, though?
You'll be able to do that.